All right. Thank you so much. The day is Monday, October 18th, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez will not be joining us this evening. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez. And Mayor Walter here. At this time, we'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, the teary republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have our first call to the public. And this evening, we have one member, Ms. Kathy Adam, who would like to speak regarding the Quinn update.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Kathy Adam. I live at 240 East Ruggles here in Florence. I've come tonight representing myself, as I wear many hats, as a property owner in the district, a former HDAC commissioner, and as a friend of Tom and Lynn Smith. I am happy to be here tonight to report on the 139-year-old Quinn building and the fact that it looks to be standing another 139 years, we hope. My joy in coming here tonight is because I was on the Historic District Advisory Commission when we had to give the okay for a demo permit. And I will tell you, we all walked out that night dejected and depressed, feeling that we had failed. Luckily, Tom and Lynn Smith stepped forward to restore their fourth building with their own funds. A little bit on the historic restoration that happened. First, this was restored to the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which is a requirement for any building that has the historic designation. But more importantly, it enables Tom and Lynn to take advantage of the 20% tax credit on the total cost of the rehabilitation, which is considerable. Secondly, all the Adobes were handmade by dirt matching the existing, which is important for the stability of the building. Third, the roof has been totally replaced with corrugated metal matching the original. It's ADA compliant bathroom, yay. Windows and doors are custom made to match original. The exterior trim is painted in a blue-green, which was custom designed by the architect, Robert Evans. The skylight is intact and preserved. It does not leak, so it has all the original glass. Lynn is returning a fully functional viable commercial building where once stood blight and an abandoned shell, awaiting only a fire system. And there was some vandalism done to the front of the building, but we fully expect that'll be made right by the realtors and the vandals. The successful restoration of this building is due to three factors. A willing property owner with sufficient funds to undertake a project like this. A credentialed experienced preservation specialist, and an educated building official who is able to interpret current code and apply it to a historic building. We are lucky to have that person on our town staff. So if you would just picture our historic district and picture if we did not have these buildings. McFarland State Park, the Carriage House at the Silver King, the Rapp Saloon, the Clark House, the Quinn Building, Machia Rental House, and the Chapel of the Gila. All those have been restored by Adobe technology. Together with Tom and Lynn, they have restored 10 historic properties in the district. The momentum is building. You can feel it. You can see it. You can taste it. This is a good news story. There are more, there are fewer vacancies and more restoration projects going on than I've seen in a long time. With the support of the town's downtown rehabilitation grant monies and the restoration of the Heritage Fund grants from the state and the many tax incentives we learned about at the session with HDAC, we are in launch mode. But I caution, we're at a crossroads. We've been here before. It takes everybody who can lend a hand to this to do so and to do so with the utmost vigor and high intentions. You need to ask, am I part of the solution? Because if you're not, you're part of the problem. So I say, let's not snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. We are on a roll, and it's only going to get better for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy Adams, and thank you for your service and volunteerism in our community. You've served on numerous boards, commissions, and you regularly participate. And I'm glad tonight that you also brought forward during Call to the Public the incentives that occur in our historic district, and I encourage more residents to also get that education as well. It's posted on our website from our last workshop. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time, either in the audience or online? All right, I do not see any hands up, either virtually or in person. So at this time, we're going to close the first call to the public. There will be a second opportunity as well if you wish to speak. Item six, we have our presentations this evening. 6A is proclamation declaring October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And to receive this proclamation will be Chief Walz, who is also dawning his support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Cortez, council members. I am very proud to be wearing the second edition of the Police Department's pink patch. This patch symbolizes awareness for breast cancer. But what's special about this patch, if you remember, council did a domestic violence proclamation earlier this month. Inside our patch, on the right-hand side, is also the purple ribbon. So the patch that we are wearing tonight, or that I am wearing tonight, symbolizes awareness for both of those campaigns. Mayor, it would be my honor if I can go and present you with a patch, not only for yourself, but for each of the council members sitting on the dais.
This is a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most common cancer affecting women, and an estimated one in eight women will develop breast cancer sometime in their lives, in which 281,550 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States in 2021. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. And whereas the pink ribbon, which is the feminine color so chosen to symbolize health, has become synonymous with breast cancer awareness. The global awareness that has been raised through the pink ribbon has helped increase early detection of breast cancer, make women more aware of the importance of doing regular breast self-examinations, and increase funds directed towards finding a cure. And whereas this year marks the 30th anniversary of the National Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program, which provides free breast and cervical cancer screenings to low-income, uninsured, and underinsured women in every state, as well as many tribal organizations and territories. And whereas early detection is one of the most important strategies for treating breast cancer successfully, and regular screenings are the most reliable way to detect it early. The COVID-19 pandemic has disrupted many parts of our lives and has produced new deficits in breast cancer early detection. So there is a renewed urgency to getting these recommended screenings scheduled before a cancer has spread and becomes less treatable. And whereas it is strongly encouraged that everyone to maintain their scheduled screenings, doctor's appointments, and treatments without delay while observing coronavirus safety measures. And now therefore I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage everyone to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent and control breast cancer and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease. Chief Walz has a patch that he would like to give to each of our council members. And then if you would join us in front of the seal. Item 6B is proclamation declaring October 2021 as Fire Prevention Month in the Town of Florence. This is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Whereas October is Fire Prevention Month, and the goal of Fire Prevention Month and Fire Prevention Week, October 3rd through 9th, is to raise fire safety awareness and help ensure your home and family are protected. And whereas in 1922, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, named the second week of October Fire Prevention Week in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire in 1871. Today, we celebrate Fire Prevention Week and Month by raising fire safety awareness and educating families, students, and communities across the United States. And whereas during this month, fire departments provide education to their communities and encourage parents and loved ones to practice fire prevention and whole-home safety. And whereas during this month, we honor our brave firefighters and first responders who risk their lives to protect us every day and reaffirm the importance of fire safety and preparedness. Whereas the Town of Florence, Arizona, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of those living in and visiting Florence. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where every two of five home fires starts in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of the reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fires themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas Florence residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that could catch on fire away from stove tops. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a reported fire in half. And whereas Florence's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Florence's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas Fire Safety Month serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires and to practice fire safety drills in our homes. Now therefore I, Tara Walter, Mayor of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this town, and I urge all of the people of Florence by checking their kitchens for fire hazards and using safe cooking practices during the Fire Prevention Month and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Florence Fire and Emergency Services, dated this 18th day of October, 2021. In turn, Chief Walter, do you have any words that you would like to say at this time?
Well, just want to thank you for this and thanks for putting together a nice presentation. But this is the time of the year that we encourage everyone to change out batteries and smoke detectors. Even though they may not be going off, the battery still could be bad. So this is a good time to go through, change all your batteries, and like we said, go through your kitchens and make sure that everything is safe. And if you have any questions or you want some assistance, feel free to contact the fire department through the town website, and we'd be happy to educate you further if you need it. Thank you.
Our third proclamation this evening is the recognition, nope, is the proclamation declaring October 17th to 23rd, 2021, as Cities and Towns Week. We appreciate every single department in the Town of Florence, and we would like to give them a highlight and a shout out for thank you for all of the services that you provide the citizens of the Town of Florence. This is a proclamation of Cities and Towns Week, October 17th to 23rd, 2021. Whereas the citizens of the Town of Florence rely on the town to experience a high quality of life in our community. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital city services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs. And whereas it is important to the Town of Florence to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of town officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the Town of Florence can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town of Florence joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 17th to 23rd, 2021, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and affix the seal on the official seal of the Town of Florence, Arizona, this 18th day of October, 2021. All right, if we could have all of our council to come down and our department heads to come up, I'd like us to take a group picture, just so we can all show our thanks and our appreciation for all that you do. Our next agenda item is item 6D, and at this time, we are going to recognize Ms. Alessandra Allen. I'm going to give a little bit of background. So we have an employee incentives committee here in the Town of Florence. And we developed the outstanding employee recognition program to give our employees the ability to recognize their coworkers for their outstanding contributions to the organizations and the citizens that we serve. This award is given based on employee nominations that are submitted to the Employee Incentive Committee, which then hears every nomination, and then based on the criteria within the program policy, chooses the monthly winner of the award. Each employee who's recognized will receive a $75 gift certificate from a local business of the winner's choosing and a certificate, which the winner receives publicly at the town council meeting to celebrate their contributions to the town. This award can only be received one time annually by an employee. At this time, I'm going to call up Ms. Alessandra Allen, so she can hear the delightful nominations that her coworkers put in. And then I'm also going to invite up our town manager to say some words about you and then give you an opportunity to speak as well. Ally Allen has the honor of being the first employee to receive this award. The following is what a coworker had to say about Ally's contribution to the work environment. Dear EIC committee members, thank you for the opportunity to point out an outstanding employee. I would like to recommend Ally Allen for this recognition. Ally is a team player. She is always available, willing to help, no matter the task. Ally is knowledgeable in all aspects of our software system and finance and is heavily relied upon. Her customer service skills, both internal and external, are excellent. Ally always follows up on issues and sees all processes through to a full resolution. Despite her position, she is never above doing the simplest task to the most complicated or time-consuming. Ally does not have to be asked to help with a problem. She is always tuned into her department processes and needs. Ally can always be relied upon to learn a process and teach others. She's very good at understanding software systems and identifying possible issues. She is patient when training others and always follows up to ensure that we understand and we are comfortable. I hope you will consider Ally Allen as our first to receive this recognition. She has worked very hard for many years and always has been loyal, and I'm proud to work with her and appreciate her always-can-do attitude. Please join us in congratulating Alessandra Allen for her outstanding work ethic and performance, which helps her and her coworkers to be successful.
So great to get an opportunity to recognize a hard-working employee. Thanks go out to the Incentives Committee. Thanks go out to the mayor. I believe this program was your brainchild, Mayor, and I know that you worked hard with the Incentives Committee to come up with this program. Thank you to the folks that provided the nomination. I'm here to tell you about, a little bit about Ally Allen tonight. There was a lot provided in the memo. Ally is the person you go to if you want something done. She has a tremendous institutional knowledge of this organization. She's got a tremendous understanding of the finance department, our capital improvements, our capital programs, as well as Cassell. She's known by everybody as the Cassell Wizard in town. But the little anecdote that I will share in the interest of time is I really like it when we go to auction for materials that council has approved to sell, because she gets so excited about it. It's like a game show. It's like The Price is Right. She works so hard to get the highest bid on every item. And when she walks over to my office to sign off on all of the titles and what have you that we've gone through the auction process, she's like a six-year-old kid at Christmas every time, and I really enjoy that. Thank you very much, Ally.
Mainly I can say thank you to my coworkers, because if it weren't for them, I wouldn't be who I am today. I love helping. I love being who I am, because we're a team, and that's what we do. So if it weren't for them, I'd probably be somewhere else by now. And of course, Becky. Becky's my saving grace, because she came back for us. And I'm really glad you're here. Thank you, everybody.
I do want to say a few words about Ally. And she's been working here since February of 2000. That's 21 years of her life invested with the town. She was a single mother, and she works two jobs. She does an outstanding job at what she does. She knows every phase of the finance department, for the most part. Some of the more complicated matters, of course, you know, if she had the training to do those, if we had time to train her to do those, she'd be exceptional at them. But she has been a lifesaver. She knows about fixed assets. She knows how to get around the finance department. If she has to work as a cashier in a snap, she's up there, willing to help every single person in our department. She's been very loyal to the town, and she is very dedicated to all of us. So we really appreciate you, Ally.
At this time, item 6E, introduction of Letitia Gilmore, Marvin Andrews Fellowship with Arizona State University. At this time, I'll turn it over to our town manager, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. A few months ago, I attended the City and County, Arizona City and County Managers Conference. And at that conference, I ran into a
And at that conference, I ran into a mentor and colleague of mine, Ms. Cynthia Silhammer. You may know Cynthia because she was the first ever town manager of Queen Creek. She's now employed by Arizona State University and heads up their MPA program at ASU. At that time, she said, hey Brent, you used to help us out in the past with mentoring some young folks in our MPA program. Would you be interested in doing that again? And of course, I said, you bet. Anything that I can do. I'd say about a month and a half later, I was contacted by Letitia. She is a Marvin Andrews Fellow. So she has the Marvin Andrews Scholarship at ASU, which are the top students in the MPA program. She's an MPA student at ASU. And she's from Cayenta on the Navajo Nation. Had the opportunity to get to know her and we've spent some time discussing interesting topics about city and town management. And as part of her program, she needed to attend a council meeting. So I contacted her last week and I said, all right, but if you attend a council meeting, we're going to give you a speaking part. So I don't think any of your cohorts probably are speaking or on the agenda at their council meetings. So you get that benefit and then you can show all your classmates on video what you did on your Monday night. So go ahead, Letitia.
All right. Thank you, Brent. Hello, everybody. My name is Letitia Gilmore. I, like Brent had mentioned, I'm a Marvin Andrews Fellow. I'm also a first year Master of Public Administration student at Arizona State University. I am also a member of the Navajo Nation. I come from a small town up north called Cayenta. As one of my classes this semester, I'm taking a class called the City and County Manager. A lot of my background is based on working with federal and tribal governments. So I don't have a lot of experience working with local municipalities like cities or towns. So with one of my assignments, I was tasked to interview a city or town manager and I chose Florence because I think small towns are great. I'm willing to learn more about it. And I just live in Tucson, so I've often passed through Florence and it was just always one of those towns that I found really interesting. So I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Billingsley and learn more about how business is conducted here and how leaders essentially lead in local government and make change in their communities in order to make things run more efficiently and listen to the concerns of the community. So with that, I'm very glad to be here. It's actually my first council meeting, so getting a gist of how things go here. But again, I want to say thank you and I look forward to seeing what the rest of the meeting has in store.
Thank you for coming this evening. Our next item is item number seven. This is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of the ONE Arizona Distribution of Opioid Settlement Funds Agreement between the Town of Florence and the State of Arizona. Item B is approval of the September 7th, September 13th, September 20th, and September 28th, 2021 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda this evening without seeing any motion for removal. We need a motion.
A motion, we approve a consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. And that motion carries. Item AA is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the exchange of services in order to perform routine or emergency roadway maintenance services, as well as utilizing shared resources in an amount not to exceed $50,000. At this time, I'll call forward Mr. Chrisalis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Previously, we brought this item to council and there was a request to change the limit of expenditure to $50,000. Town staff has worked with Maricopa County to revise that. Their attorney has reviewed it and it has been sent back to us for your approval. As a quick reminder, this is just an agreement that will allow us to share resources. It still have to be done on a task by task. It is mutually beneficial, though I don't think that Maricopa County will call me to help them. In theory, it can be. It serves a better purpose, obviously, if you're maybe Buckeye in Maricopa County or Phoenix in Maricopa County. But for us, again, this is just the ability, if needed in an emergency, whether it's a traffic signal pole, maybe it's even the use of a bucket truck. There's all kinds of things that we may use this for. So we've made the revisions as requested to $50,000.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from our council regarding this agenda item? Seeing none moved, we need a motion.
I motion that we approve to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the exchange of services in order to perform routine or emergency roadway maintenance services, as well as utilizing shared resources in amount not to exceed $50,000.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, new business. Nine A is discussion approval, disapproval of Amendment One to the Service Line Warranties of America Marketing Agreement. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and members of council, the Town of Florence entered into our first agreement with the Service Line Warranties Agreement in 2016. There are 113 active policies, 63 active external water line policies, 42 external sewer line policies, and eight active interior plumbing and drainage policies. Since having this, our residents have saved $12,539,000 in repair costs. In order to have this service, the external water line service plan is $5.33 per month. The external sewer line, septic line plan is $7.33 per month. And the interior plumbing and drainage is $6.58 per month. Now, what this plan is, is that they come in and they get addresses for our people that are on our water and sewer and they send it to it and they're allowed to use our logo. And so what you'll see is our logo and then it will say in conjunction with the water service line. We're not party to it, but we are participating in it. If the Town of Florence chooses to no longer enter into this program, what would happen is that the people that currently have the plan would be allowed to continue with the plan. If they lapse in coverage, they would no longer be able to have the plan and no future resident would be able to have the plan. This is a National League of Cities and Towns program that helps historical communities and with the cost of those external costs. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The reason why we asked for this to come forward was to make sure that council is aware. There's always questions when our seal, our town seal gets on any of the programs as if it's a Town of Florence program or why our seal is on. So we went ahead and had this program come before council to reapprove with the current council to make sure that council would still like to have our logo on and we would still like to participate in this program that is recognized by the National League of Cities and Towns. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this agenda item? Okay. I don't have any questions either. Would that we need a motion?
Yes. I motion, we approve of the approval of Amendment One to the Service Line Warranties of America Marketing Agreement.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. And that motion carries. Item number nine B is discussion approval, disapproval of the design of the wayfinding signs and direct staff to proceed with construction and installation. At this time, we'll call forward Mr. Larry Harmer.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward to you again. As we discussed, the last time we were here, we demonstrated the various options that have been presented by our contractor for installations of signs. And we committed then to bring these back to you before we actually started construction. Just wanted to go over a few points and where this final design came from. If you recall, there were three options. I didn't want to complicate things tonight by revisiting all of those. I'll just kind of tell you the components that ended up in the final design. First of all, the topper on both the entry signs and then the downtown pedestrian oriented signs came off of one of the options. One we referred to is the tombstone or grave marker heading. One of them didn't have any type of a real heading other than a boxed off. And the other one had more of what we would describe as an old mantle clock design. This was one that in talking with HDAC and with Chamber Board and individuals who are interested, what we decided on, the finials, the detailed finials to trim it off, came off of one of the options, what we consider the lamp base footers came off one of the options. And then the flag mounted and individual mounted panels. This was the most versatile and that's what really sold people on it. These panels can be, the way this is designed, these are incremental Legos for all intent and purposes where they can lock together, be put together in different order, one panel removed and other replaced, things of that nature. The same thing on the pole mounted pedestrian oriented signs. These can have not only the two-way panels like we show here, but actually in all four directions. So depending on the downtown intersection where they might be placed, there may be two panels, might be three panels, arrows pointing in different directions into different amenities. For example, if one were to be placed northeast corner of Maine and Butte in front of the bank in our right of way, not in ADOT's right of way, and I'll get to that in a moment, there may be panels that point west to the winery, north towards Town Hall, businesses, restaurants, south to restaurants, Pinnell County Historical Museum, things of that nature. So we can really mix and match these. And each pedestrian sign then could be customized depending on its location and what amenities are going to be close to it that we could direct individuals to. A couple of other things on it, neutral tones, these will be powder coated, which is a very durable type of coloring process or paint process. We'll be working directly with the Streets Department and Public Works as far as location to make sure everything's properly installed and located. And the, let's see, I think I've covered just about everything. I got through it all real quick. So basically, we'll be walking the downtown with our contractor and with Public Works to really determine the proper location and then the correct panels that would be on each individual location as they go forward. We have initiated discussions with ADOT and that has to do with the large signs. And unfortunately, that didn't work out well for us. They have very strict policies on what they will allow on anything within their rights of way. So not only with what the wording is, but also the colors. So our contractor has initiated discussions with them and staff will be involved on what they will allow on 287 and 79, coming in from the south and then coming in from the west into towards the downtown. The sign that the town already has at the intersection of the Main Street Extension and 79 already kind of does everything we want here. So that one may just stay in place. And what we would we get in kind back from the, not in kind, but as a trade off from the contractor is maybe some additional pedestrian oriented signs. So basically, we'll be expending the contract, but possibly getting more product out of it in the long run. As far as what ADOT is going to allow right now, it looks like they may allow us to put some very generic information such as historic downtown Florence. It may allow us to point towards the Town Hall, High School, those types of things, but it will not allow us to identify retail businesses or restaurants or anything of that nature. So we're going to do what we can. Also, the chances are real good that they're going to be blue and white. As you see, like the standard freeway, blue signs, blue boards that have the different business logos on them. It looks like that's the direction that they will allow us to go. We hope to at least be able to get our new logo placed on there. And we did go over these, by the way, with the recently departed logo guru, Mr. Bitter, just to make sure that we're in compliance with that entire program with the way these are presented. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And with your endorsement tonight, our next step is to actually go out and start walking the streets and getting these things designed, located, and constructed and installed. Our goal is still try to get something in the ground by the first of the year.
Thank you. This has been a long time coming. We've been planning this for a few years and a lot of hard work and efforts have gone into it.
But it's a fun project. People are really excited about this.
The product is beautiful. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
All right. Without, we just need a motion.
I motion to approval of the design of wafer signs and direct staff to proceed with construction and installation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Item C is discussion approval, disapproval of using $9,158,403.30 in American Rescue Plan Act funds for proposed general government water and wastewater projects. At this time, I'll call forward Ms. Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, was established in March of this year. The program provides support to state, tribal, and local governments in response to the negative economic and health impacts of COVID-19. Local governments with a population of less than 250,000 received an allocation of funds through the state from the federal government. In June, Florence received half of its allocated funds, which was about a little over $4.5 million. Our total allocation is a little over $9.1 million. The remaining funds will be distributed probably the mid part of next year. ARPA funds are considered federal grants, so we manage them the same way we manage our other federal grants. There's certain rules and standards that we must meet. The good news is ARPA funds are excludable. They do not count towards our expenditure limitation. So that helps ease some of the pressure that we have with our budget this year and next. ARPA funds can be used for eligible expenses that occur between March 3rd of this year and December 31st of 2024. If we use these funds for any construction projects, we just have to encumber the funds by 2024. We can take up until December 31st, 2026 to expend those funds. There are four main categories in which we can use ARPA funds. And I'm just going to read these off. They're kind of cumbersome to memorize. Category one, we can use funds to respond directly to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. We can also use the funds to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID. This may specifically apply to public safety personnel. There's a lot of rules with this funding and we have to directly tie their job performance to COVID response. The third category is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID. And those provision of government services, the federal government would really like to see those in qualified census tracts, which means that we would provide services for more low-income residents. And lastly, the fourth category is to make investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Now, up until this point, we have only had the interim final rule from the federal government and that provides interim guidance on how to use and manage these funds. We have not yet received the final rule. The interim final rule does give us a list of kind of specific types of ways that we can use the funding and I would like to read those to you now. The funding can be used for assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits. It can reimburse for costs that directly respond to COVID, capital investments in public facilities that meet pandemic operational needs, aid to travel, tourism, and hospitality industries. And we're seeing funding coming down from the state, from state agencies such as the Arizona Office of Tourism that addresses this specifically. Funds can also be used for health and social services to low-income communities, as I mentioned before, vaccine incentive programs and back-to-work incentives and limited public safety expenses, as mentioned, investments in parks and other outdoor public spaces. And the Arizona State Parks Agency is another agency that is providing grant dollars to fund these types of projects. We can also use funds to maintain infrastructure and of course, water, sewer, and broadband And of course, uh, water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. So with that, all of that said, uh, staff has had several meetings to brainstorm and discuss the best. What we think would be the, the best use of funds, uh, given our current state. And so there are four projects that would fall under general government that we would like to propose uh, for approval this evening. Uh, number one would be the audio visual project for town council chambers here. Uh, in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, the second project is town hall HVAC infrastructure, which is a much needed project uh, here for this building. And then upgrades to the admin and finance windows. And then lastly, an employee vaccine incentive program. Underwater projects, uh, we propose the use of funds for the skid utility relocation project that is currently underway. They started construction last week. Uh, the second project is the Adamsville Road Waterline uh. Improvement project and lastly, the Gila Bridge, Gila River Bridge Utility Relocation Project, which is another project that um. Has come up fairly recently and that will go to construction soon. Uh, the third category under wastewater, the South Wastewater uh, SVR Aeration Project. Now this is in part WIFA funded and I believe it also falls under the loan that will be discussed here shortly. So this is like a three point eight million dollar project that we're kind of piecing the, the financing together. Uh, second project is the South uh, wastewater treatment pl- plant. Headworks and odor control uh, project. And then the main street wastewater main replacement. And lastly, the South Wastewater Treatment Plant Disinfection System Upgrade. And I might add on the Headworks and Odor Control Project that is also partially with the funded. So uh, that is the complete list of projects that we propose. That the town uses its ARPA fund allocation for, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Town Council, I see Council Member Hughes.
Uh, explain to me on the employee vaccine incentive, a hundred thousand. Now on, on the other uh, definition, number six, it says back to work incentive. You're actually going to use the money for vaccine incentive?
That is allowable under the ARPA funds. And um, when we discussed this in, in previous meetings, that. Our infrastructure projects were a higher priority than this, but uh, we did want to include a, a project of this nature.
Well, tell me, wh- what would you be using a hundred thousand dollars for?
And maybe I can defer to Ms. Garcia to answer that question if you don't mind.
There are a couple of programs that the town has already put into place. Um, one of the programs is that each employee once again has ten days that's eligible for COVID leave. And so that means that we encourage you to go, if you're exposed. Or if you're showing symptoms, we encourage you to go and to seek testing and then to shelter in place as your doctor recommends. Um, it's three to five days after exposure that they're supposed to get a test. So this puts um, sick leave basically on the books for those that, that would be sick. We haven't gone through and um, done an employee incentive yet and outlined those. It would not be for the employees that gets the original shots. It's looking at a booster and it's going in and following the government guidelines. But until there's all boosters out, we wouldn't provide that.
It sounds like it's more back to work incentive.
The back to work incentives is to keep our team working. So our number one strategy that we're trying to do is if you're sick, stay home. If we're, we're afraid of um, people infecting others and having a mass spread. Our number one concern is that we can provide services to the town of Florence, no matter what we ensue. So for employees that are afraid of leave time, we've already placed that leave on the books. It's just depending on whether or not we can pay ourselves back or not. And like I said, there's been no other plan that has come up with, if it is approved, we would go forward and we would create, would create a detailed plan and bring it back to council.
All right. Vice Mayor?
So just so that I'm clear on this, because I think I may have, maybe I'm misunderstanding something. Um, is this for employees who have been vaccinated?
No, it would be for any employee of the town of Florence.
So the, the ten day, the extra sick days, that's for any employee that's sick?
That is for any employee that's been exposed or is currently testing. Or any employee that tests positive that has to shelter in place. Ten days is a long time to miss work all at one time. And our biggest fear is that we don't want an employee afraid to miss because they don't have any time on the book. And then coming to work to expose the rest of the team. So we're trying to put those benefits in place that will keep the entire team safe and keep the entire team working. Our whole goal is to keep our momentum going forward. And if people are sick, we're asking them to stay home. If they need to test, we're asking them to test. And we're asking those that can come to work to come to work so that we can keep providing services for our citizens.
Regardless of vaccination.
Regardless of vaccine.
So then when we're talking about um. A hundred thousand dollars and you're talking about the second, the booster shot. To me, that's when I'm like, oh, so if you've been vaccinated, you get rewarded. If you haven't been vaccinated, you're not going to receive the same. And I don't support anything like that. We either treat all our employees across the board the same and they all get the same. Um, incentives regardless of their vaccination status or no one gets it because. I support my individual choice and I can't stand behind something that is going to make someone who chooses not to be vaccinated. I have a heart condition. I cannot get vaccinated because it causes blood clots. When you have a heart condition, that's not an advisable thing to do. So if I were an employee, would it be fair for someone else who is healthy and can get a vaccination with possibly no risk to their current health? To be rewarded and me not get that reward simply because my current health status does not permit me to do what they've done. So as long as I'm clear that and understand this correctly, this is for all staff regardless of vaccination status. And we are not rewarding people who have been vaccinated.
This, this is for all employees. I can say that for all of our employees to receive ten days off. If they were all required to do so, it would be more than a hundred thousand dollars, obviously. But um, the benefit is only for those who are exposed, those who are sick or those who test positive. And that is in place today. And, and, and we do not have any other benefits at this time that have been suggested or approved at this point. And any future benefit obviously would come back to council. Because this is just for sick leave.
For me, it's the wording of it. It sounds like it's an incentive. It sounds like it's only for those that get vaccine. So I didn't, that's what I didn't like either.
I, I think that for, in all fairness, when we began talking about it, we were talking about vaccines. But the policy that actually came forward that was signed off by the town managers and currently in place. Is to be able to provide that sick leave for employees to make sure. That we're supporting our team and making sure they get what they need while, while we're going through this pandemic.
Are there any other clarifications or questions? Council Member Mendoza.
I noticed that some of this stuff is uh. Items that we've approved in the past. Is it just moving the money over to the ARPA fund? Is that what we're doing?
Madam Mayor, Council Member, as far as I concerned, that is correct. So we just wanted um. Those two projects that are either have begun or, or will soon, uh, we intend to use ARPA funds for them, so.
All right, I see no other questions. Thank you for those explanations. At this time, we need a motion.
I motion, we approve using nine million, one hundred and fifty eight thousand, four hundred and three dollars and thirty cents, thirty cents. In American Rescue Plan Act funds for proposed general government water and wastewater projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item number D is discussion approval disapproval of adoption of a resolution number seventeen ninety eight twenty one. Which is approving the sale and execution and delivery of excise tax revenue obligations. Series twenty twenty one evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof. And a purchase agreement from the town approving the form and authorizing. The execution and delivery of such purchase agreement and other necessary agreements for such sale. Delegating authority to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing and declaring an emergency. At this time, I'm going to call on Ms. Becky Aminas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, we're bringing to you tonight the excise tax uh, revenue bond obligation.
Becky, can you?
Yes, series twenty twenty one. Um, in just a little bit, I'm going to have Mark Reader from Stifel come up and do a presentation for you. But I do want to run through this uh, presentation. I want you to be assured that the town of Florence has ample money in its account. It has a lot of money, but we're uh, prohibited right now because of our um. Permanent base adjustment expenditure limitation. This year I budgeted sixty five million plus in expenditure. And excluded up to our maximum expenditure of thirty one million. So we have only that and it, that's the maximum amount, a little bit over thirty one million that I can spend this year. We were uh, pretty sure that this fiscal year, we were going to need to have some financing done. Uh, as you're aware, this town is growing right now and we have needs. We've had projects out there that have all of a sudden come to a point uh, where we need to move forward on. We've had some unexpected things happen, so we are now coming to council to um. Let you know that uh, we would like to finance these items if possible. Whenever you finance uh, these kinds of projects, the amount of money that you use is excludable from expenditure limitation. And so is the debt service in future years. Now this is going to be like that, not just for this year, but for next year also. And until such time that we can increase our expenditure limitation. So I want you to be aware that this is not a financial issue, it's a budget limitation issue. The town has uh, is very sound in its finances, but we have to make adjustments uh, because of our expenditure limitation. We have projects this year in the amount of four million, seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. And in, in my RCA to you, it has what these projects are in detail. One is a bridge replacement for one point five million dollars and please remember that these are estimates. They may or may not um. Fall in this amount of money. They may come under or they may go over. We also have a water barn that was budgeted this year, but uh, our water fund needs. Um, additional capacity for budget, so we decided to throw this water bu- uh, barn in as a financing option. A fire apparatus of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This, it was our unexpected uh, failure of a fire engine this year and we need to get it taken care of. And our MRSCO project that's going ahead for one million, nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And you can see by the breakdown what it's for. And so uh, we have closing costs for this project that will be included in the financing of eight, eighty thousand dollars. If a no vote is given, we cannot move forward on these projects. They will just stall right here. And probably next year also, I cannot move forward on these because we don't have budget capacity. And if you vote yes on this, the projects can move forward and the necessary improvements can be realized now. As again I said, our uh, funding is four million, seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. We had a phenomenal interest rate that was uh, given to us of one point four nine percent with the hard work of uh, Mark Reader with Stifel. And our estimated annual payment would be about seven hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, what we did with this financing is make it very flexible. I don't like to finance this kind of money out very far. So we did a seven year financing on it with the option of paying off early. And we are going to have some funding coming in on that bridge project of about a million dollars. So we'll hold that in our debt service fund until such time that we can go ahead and pay this off in full. I don't anticipate it going the full seven years. But just in case with our expenditure limitation does not get uh, repaired. Then we're going to probably have to go ahead and fund this. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and let Mark Reader do his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Reader. How are you tonight? Absolutely.
Well, thank you. Mark Reader with Stifel. Nicholas, as you know, we represent the town as your financial advisor. And as usual, Becky did a phenomenal job summarizing the reasons and the purposes for the financings. I'm going to walk you through here. Some of this will be a real quick repeat, but I'm going to walk you through this. These are the projects that Becky mentioned uh, that are going to be financed with the proceeds of this uh, essentially this private placement financing. We then uh, came up with some policy objectives here of the town council. We know that the town is very thoughtful and very careful before you do any type of a debt issuance. We know that that's something that you all take uh, very seriously as well as staff. And so uh, the purpose of these financings obviously is to complete these essential public infrastructure improvements of your town. Your town's growing. Um, obviously we're doing it also as a way to, to maintain compliance with your expenditure limit situation that, that you're dealing with. And you're managing your way through. As Becky said, we want to pay this debt off early, so they asked us to go out and negotiate a seven year essentially level debt amortization. And to make it very, very clear that we want to be able to prepay this debt at any time with no penalty. And so uh, we, we've been able to do that as well and uh. And then secure, as we say up here, the tax exempt interest rate. So we went ahead and entered to negotiations with National Bank. They're a local, obviously local bank. They're a good organization and they've got a very, they're the only ones really in the industry that allow for this prepayment. Which we know is really important to you because it's likely you're going to pay this debt down before the seven year period. So we negotiated with them. We got a bid, as Becky said, of one point four nine percent. Very, very low interest rate. And as uh, as somebody that lives and breathes this in the daily markets, we felt that was a very reasonable and very, very competitive rate. So we were very pleased to get the one point four nine percent for the town. Okay, essentially free money, as you all know, you net inflation out, so good job on that. Uh, this is just a little chart. We like to, we're still in a very low interest rate environment, as you know, we're starting to see some inflation in the market. And so we are starting to see interest rates, you know, edge up a tad, but we were able to lock into the one forty nine. So again, we're very pleased with that. Okay, just to spend a few minutes with you and, and we always like to be very transparent with town council as does staff. So when we do these transactions, it's a revenue bond. Uh, very common in Arizona for all of our cities and towns to finance their public infrastructure in a similar fashion. And we've done this for you over the years. But what we do is we pledge these revenues. And uh, we got a lot of numbers on there. I'm just going to go to twenty twenty one. And uh, Becky and, and Carl and staff provided us with various revenues here. You're familiar with these. But what a year you had in twenty twenty one. Congratulations. You can see your local sales tax revenues went from five point three to six point eight million, all during COVID. We never would have thought that, would we, when all this started? So we got six point eight there. We got some franchise taxes, license permits. The other major revenues of your uh, of your town, as you know, is your state, sales tax, your state income tax and your auto loop. So you can see for twenty twenty one, you came in, you finished the year about nineteen million dollars in revenue. Very, very strong, up from sixteen million the previous year. So the town's doing very well financially, good job on that. And I think one of the reasons why we were able to attract that very low interest rate and provide this pledge of revenues. So I just wanted to share that with you. And then this is kind of our amortization schedule. Uh, if you look here, we're in the middle of the page, the four, seven, five, five. I ran that at two percent. And so you can see the level debt service there was about seven hundred and thirty thousand. With the one point four nine, I think it's down to about seven hundred and sixteen thousand. So we saved a little bit of money there. That was just really kind of an estimate. And then this shows for every dollar of debt you have, you have fifteen dollars and fifty six cents of revenue. So again, very, very strong and again, reflected in the little bit that we got. This is the, the RFI. This is the due diligence term sheet that has all of the financial and economic and legal requirements of a financing like this. So we put that in there just for your, maybe when you go home tonight, you can take a quick look at that, read it, and let us know if you have any questions. Just kidding. So I hope that, I hope my summary was helpful. That was complimentary to what Becky just shared with, with town council. And Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm glad to answer any question that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm going to hold my questions to about midnight and then call Mark.
I'll be up.
All right, seeing no questions or comments, we need a motion.
I motion the approval of adoption of resolution number 1798-21.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Item number E is discussion, approval, disapproval of authorizing staff to proceed with conducting the citizen survey, employee survey, and the rodeo survey. At this time, I will call Ms. Lisa Garcia.
So Mayor and members of council, this was a really fun request for council action to be able to put together. And it's, it's really exciting to work with the National Community Survey Group. As you know, they are endorsed by the National League of Cities and Towns and by the National Association of Cities and County Managers. It's going to be such a great tool for us to be able to have. What it does is it allows us to go in, use their software, and benchmark against other communities our size across the United States and in the state of Arizona. It's not how well did we do compared to last year? It's how do we compare against communities our size that have the same funding that we have and what our communities think? Now, we go out and we have already provided them our GIS surveys that show, and our census data, and so they are able to go and input all that into their servers. And they're able to go through and see what our exact breakdown is from our, our community. Then they go in and they pick people who are going to use our benchmark to be just by random, and they're going to be the ones who are going to receive postcards and letter in the mail that are going to have a survey number on it. And this is for the citizen survey. Once they do that, they'll send them two cards. They'll have eight weeks, basically, to be able to get back that information. And in the last two weeks, we'll start on Facebook, we'll start going in, and we'll putting in polling information that anyone who'd like to take the survey will also be allowed to be included. When the town has done it in the past, we've never opened it up for anyone. And as long as they can go in and show their address and it matches the census information, they'll be able to fill out and also complete the survey. So we have a good chance of getting a large population to be able to fill out the survey. The citizen survey, we are allowed to have five individualized questions that this council individualizes. And I've also provided the timeline. If we choose the questions tonight, we will be able to have our survey results back by the February council meeting. That means that we can use this information in establishing our budgets, establishing our priorities, and establishing our strategic plan. So it's, it's an exciting time. If you see the citizen survey, it is the one, if you have a book, it's Mark Citizen Survey. It's a little tab. If you have a computer, it's right after the RCA. It's the first six pages after the request for council action. You'll see the first five pages are actually that, that are the survey that we do not get to impact or change. There was a couple of questions that they allowed us to remove, and it was, is that, do you do snowplow removal and things like that? Since we're not a winterized town, we didn't need to do that. So if you go to page five and you go to page six, right after page five, it's not numbered. You'll see there are five questions that are basically the questions that were brought to us by our council. So we need to decide if we like these questions and we want to include them. And I was contacted and have two additional questions that we could possibly consider. So to start with, it's please indicate number 13 at the top of the page, right after the one labeled on the bottom, number five. It says, please indicate how satisfied, if at all, you are with the overall performance of the following members of government. We have added town manager, town staff, and town council, and they can select a rating from very satisfied to don't know. It's very unsatisfied to don't know. And so we do have that one. Number 13 is, have you had any in-person phone, email, or other contact with an employee of the Town of Florence within the last six, 12 months, including police, utility, customer service, or other? If no, you move on to the next question. If yes, you rate them on knowledgeable responsiveness, courtesy, and overall impression. And again, you rate them from excellent to poor. And there's an I don't know. But obviously, if you've said no, you haven't had contact, you don't answer that question anymore. Number 14, please indicate how much, if at all, you would support a town code that requires the town manager and department managers to live within the planning area. And it says current employees are exempt. The rating would be from strongly to support to strongly opposed, and then again, I don't know. Question 15, how much of a resource, if at all, are each of the following services for you for obtaining information on the town government and its activities, events, and services? You rank an electronic newsletter, town website, Facebook, LinkedIn, newspaper, or in-meeting purposes, or in-meeting purposes, that's funny, in meetings, in-person meetings. Major source, minor source, or not a source. So we'll find out where they are getting their information from. Number 16, have you visited the Florence rodeo ground venue in the last 12 months? Number 17, Florence rodeo grounds venues, which host two events per year, is in need of renovations for continued use. Please indicate how much you support or oppose each of the following in relation to the rodeo grounds. Now, they are from strongly to support all the way down to strongly opposed, or I don't know. Moving the current rodeo grounds facilities closer to town where existing water and wastewater facilities are available. Repairing the existing rodeo grounds facility and installing a new well at an estimated cost of $2 million, or introducing additional, or introducing additional town-sponsored activities and events at the rodeo grounds. And we received a request to add expending monies on non-rodeo park improvements such as Heritage Park, a new recreation center, or post-inbut preserve. And finally, the last question that we received was, rank the following amenities in order of importance. They would be ranked from 1 to 6. They're in alphabetical order. Heritage Park improvements, Little League Park improvements, Main Street Park improvements, New Recreation Center with 24/7 gym, post-inbut hiking and biking trails, rodeo ground improvements. And so we have exactly nine questions that we have to narrow to our five questions that can go on to the survey.
What was after? I was trying to write that last one that you stated.
Number 18.
Ranking 1 through 6.
Rank the following amenities in order of importance, 1 to, 1 through 6. They are listed in alphabetical order. Heritage Park improvements, Little League Park improvements, Main Street Park improvements, New Recreation Center, 24/7 gym, post-inbut hiking, biking trails, rodeo ground improvements. Council can choose to add all, or five of them. We can choose to add none of them. It's entirely council's call. The other questions that are part of the survey that are the first five pages, those are the national level questions where they request that we do not change so that we can also be a comparator for other communities.
I notice one thing in looking at this right now. If you look at page number, gosh, I don't even know. I'm assuming it is 6. There's two number 13s. It says 13, please indicate how satisfied, if at all, you are with the performance of the following members of the town government. And then number 13 is, have you had any in-person? And there's also two 14s.
Yes, that's because it's a sample only, and we have to select them. And so they'll fix that. That's the national survey entering them. And so we need to go back and tell them what, what questions we're going to remove, and they'll fix the numbering.
If it's helpful, and I'm reading this correctly, again, if you look at number, page 6, number 13, where it says, please indicate how satisfied, if at all, you are with the overall performance of the following members of the town council. If you go to page 4, I see overall, how would you rate the quality of services provided by each of the following Town of Florence and then the federal government? Because if I'm looking at wanting to drill down the data of our town and understanding, if I'm hearing you correctly, we only have five questions that we can add in here?
You can add, there could be multiple ways to be able to track the questions. Like if you see question number 17 or the potential of the question number 18 with the six ranking choices, they can, they can vote on multiple questions underneath, but they have to be listed within those questions. And the, if we wanted to add more, it would be an increase in cost. And the one thing that they also do is that if you don't see your exact question here, it's because they took liberty to make the question more neutral. We did have some questions that were like, either pick this or this, and so they have reworded it for neutrality. They don't want to, they want to make sure that we're not leading citizens to pick a particular question and to make sure that it is the citizen's choice.
Now, would number 14, so you didn't answer my question. We can only pick as a council, five additional questions.
Yes, and there are questions that are very similar to some of the questions that are within the survey, but these were the questions that were received by the town
Okay.
and asked to be able to place on. So we have went in and provided those links and made sure that every person who submitted a question does have it here. We did have a couple of late questions. They're the ones I have on the paper here that have not been added into this, but council has to decide what they want to do with that.
Okay, I'm just looking at, and for council, if we have redundancy and questions.
So if you'd like, I can go through the survey real quick, and I'll start, I'll start with page 1. So on the survey, it says, please rank the following aspects of the quality of life in Florence. So you'll see in a question number one, is everything about quality of life issues? Question number two, and you'll see that there's several rankings that you can put underneath, but again, only, that only counts as one question. They go from excellent to poor. And of course, someone can say, I don't know. Question number two is, please rate each of the following characteristics as they relate to Florence as a whole. And again, they are, there are several underneath, and that's, these are the ones that all, all communities are rated in the same way. Please indicate how likely or unlikely you are to do each of the following. And they're rated from very likely to very unlikely, and that's recommend Florence as a place to live and remain living in Florence for the next five years. Number four, rate how safe or unsafe you feel. They're rated very safe, all the way to very unsafe, or they do not know. And that's basically about the crime rate, about the community and how safe they feel living here. So you go to number five, please rate the job you feel Florence community does at each of the following area. So this is where it says, making all residents feel welcome, attracting people from diverse backgrounds, value and respecting residents in a diverse background, taking care of valuable residents, elderly, disabled, homeless, or vulnerable, I'm sorry, excellent to poor, or I don't know. Rate each of the following in the Florence community. Overall quality of business services, variety of businesses, vibrancy of the downtown, employment opportunities, shopping, cost of living in Florence, overall image. You can rate those from excellent to poor. Of course, you can say, I don't know. Number seven is, please also rate each of the following in the Florence community. Talks traffic, ease of public parking, ease of travel by Florence, ease of travel by public transportation, ease of travel by bicycle, ease of travel by walking, well-planned residential growth, well-planned commercial growth, well-designed neighborhoods, preservation of historical and cultural characteristics of the community, public places where people want to spend their time, variety of housing options, availability for affordable quality housing, overall quality of new developments in Florence, overall appearance of Florence, cleanliness of Florence, water resources. We're removing that one too, by the way, because we don't have beaches, lakes, ponds, or riverways for activity. Air quality, availability of paths and walking trails, fitness opportunities, including exercise classes, parks, and trails, recreation opportunities, available and affordable quality food, available and affordable quality healthcare, available preventative, preventative health services, availability of affordable quality mental health care, availability to attend culture, arts, music activities, community support of the arts, availability of affordable quality childcare, K-8 education, adult education, sense of civic and community pride, neighborliness of residents in Florence, opportunities to participate in social events and activities, opportunities to attend special events and festivals, opportunity to volunteer, opportunity to participate in manners, openness and acceptance of community towards a diverse background. Number eight, please indicate whether or not you have done any of the following activities. And here's where you get into, once again, contacted a town employee. And so you can see that there is a specific level of redundancy, but we have drilled down. Contacted Florence elected officials, in-person phone, email to express your opinion, attended a local meeting, watched online a local public meeting, volunteered your time in a group or activity in Florence, campaigned or advocated for a local issue, voted in your most recent local elections, used bus, rail, subway, carpooled, walked. And then Town of Florence Community Service Survey. Number nine, please rate the quality of each of the following in Florence. Public information service, economic development, traffic enforcement, traffic signal timing, street repair, street cleaning, street lighting, snow removal, that will be removed, sidewalk maintenance, bus transit service, land use planning, code enforcement, affordable high-speed internet access, garbage collection, drinking water, sewer services, stormwater management, power such as APS or utilities, utility billing, police or sheriff service, crime prevention, animal control, ambulance or medical services, fire services, fire prevention, emergency preparedness, preservation of natural areas, Florence open space, recycling, yard waste pickup, town parks, recreation programs, classes, recreations or facilities, health services, public services, overall customer services by the Town of Florence employees. Number 10, please rate the following categories for Florence government performance. Value of service for taxes paid to Florence, overall direction Florence is taking, the job Florence government does, welcoming residential and resident involvement, overall confidence in the Florence government, generally acting in the best interest of the community, being honest, being open and transparent to the public, informing residents about issues facing the community, treating all residents fairly, treating residents with respect. Number 11, overall, how would you rate the quality of service provided by each of the following? Town of Florence, federal government. 12, how would you rate the, how, please rate how important, if at all, you think it is for Florence community to focus each year on the following, focus each of the following in the coming two years. Overall economic health of Florence, overall quality of transportation system, overall design and layout of residential and commercial areas, overall utility infrastructure in Florence, overall feeling of safety in Florence, overall quality and natural environment in Florence, overall quality parks and recreational opportunities, overall health and wellness opportunities in Florence, overall opportunities for education, culture, and arts, and residents' connection and engagement with their community. If you see on the next page, that anything that's D1 to D14 is all about their statistics, we'll be able to see this in the background, and we'll be able to go in and be able to group them by age, group them by how long they've lived in Florence, be able to do a lot of things, but we won't know who actually puts them in. So now that we've heard all of the other options that they're going to be voting on, does that make it easier for you in thinking about your five questions?
Yes, it does make it easier in having conversation and thinking about those five questions, for sure. The one item that I noticed that's typically in these types of surveys that I didn't notice in the D area, and I'm wondering just why they didn't include it, is the level of education, because that's something that we usually.
I can reach out and ask them that question, but nationally, this is the information that is taken.
Okay, all right, I want to hear from council, just in hearing from you and what you had presented, just one view that I want to share of what I heard is, the first one, I'm not, I, I was a little confused by it. I don't know if anybody wants to delve into it, but where it says expend money on non-rodeo park improvements. I heard it and then I thought, well, what is this again? And then going through the suggestion of ranking one through six improvements, like Heritage Park, Little League, Main Street Park, New Rec Center with twenty-four-seven gym, Post and Butte Preserve, hiking biking trails, rodeo grounds. I think multiple members of our council before have said, you know, we would like to see that type of ranking in, you know, that order of what's important to our community, what do our citizens want and in what order? And I know that we've already brought plans forward and there's plans in the work and that could either reaffirm or repurpose, change direction. So I, I feel my input would be, that question would be helpful. I also like, if I, knowing that we could only choose like the five, what was the live here question? I'm so sorry.
Hold on, let me find it.
Oh, that was the, okay. So, so the, the ones, yes, so the ones that I heard that almost weren't redundant, that's what I queued in on when I wrote it. So I thought like the ranking one through six was good, the living here was good, the information access of how you get your information about the town was good. And then the rodeo grounds, have you visited in twelve months, as well as the rodeo ground venue? And I felt that those would give us five questions that weren't redundant or asked in another spot, but I want to hear from the rest of our council as well. Councilmember Hughes?
Now, and th- this is how I saw it. I saw fifteen, which is the rankings of the, of the particular things within Parks and Rec. See, I think twelve already says it about Parks and Rec, the wellness opportunities, education, culture, and arts. They're, they're already asking if that's important.
But it's not ranking a project, because the reason why I thought it was good to leave the ranking, the improvements, one through six, Heritage Park, Little League, Main Street, because those are very specific. And when we're saying with the rodeo questions down here, I just want to scroll, moving the current rodeo grounds, repairing the well, introducing, like I almost, not almost, I want to know from our citizens, where do these projects rank in your mind in order that we should have them in our CIP? Because something I noticed when we were going through our budget this past year is some of the money that we had in the CIP for those projects were moved over into the rodeo grounds because we needed to address, you know, the health and safety issues. But we still have those projects that we've gone through, you know, the planning process, the community engagement and input.
Do you think that, that the, the people that are filling this out are going to understand and not think this is redundant from twelve to fifteen?
So if you're looking at twelve through fifteen.
Our twelve, where it talks about, oh, you know, rank, rank importance. So it's kind of like that, like the number fifteen is, am I, am I reading that right?
I can see what you're saying, but at the same time, so if I'm looking at this saying, um, quality of parks and recreation in Florence opportunities, that to me doesn't say, hey, I care about the Little League and I want to know what you're doing to help our Little League because we have a large population that participates in Little League. You also have population that says, hey, um, Heritage Park, you have this beautiful master plan, where is it? This is important to me. So that feedback of ranking.
Call it out.
Yes, I want to see those projects ranked in order of what they feel is more important.
And they won't put that as a sub thing underneath this? We can't, we can't go under twelve and add those little things?
Those they've asked for us not to touch, we get the, we, we're going to get the questions thirteen through eighteen.
Hello.
All right, Councilmember Mendoza?
I, I can add one more thing if it's helpful. After we send out, um, the citizen survey, we're going to have such a valuable, um, tool and information available. What we'll have is, we will actually have a group that we're able to tend out, send out more surveys to, and we'll be able to, um, post the surveys, send them out the same way. So if any time throughout the year that council wants to do additional surveys or really drill down something, we'll be able to do more. If we have an item that comes before you and you're not ready to vote on it, and you're like, can we take thirty days and go back and see what our residents want? As long as they have entered into the Pollock system, which we're going to be advertising, making sure our residents do enter in and say that they're part of our, our, our residents, that we're going to be able to grab that information for council. So it's a really fun tool that you're going to have available to you anytime.
Thank you.
Um, I agree on the order of importance, um, question. Uh, I, I believe we need to know that, um, as far as the other questions. I mean, a lot of these questions are answered in other and other areas, um, but I do think we need to know the order. I, I agree with that one.
Councilmember Neil?
Mr. Billingsley had his hand up before he called me.
Oh, I apologize. I was just going to all council. Go ahead, Mr. Billingsley.
I was just gonna, writing some notes down here and you listed five questions, Mayor, in, in your intro there that you preferred. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what those five were. Ranking of projects, which was the new one, I think she had a sixteen, or is it eighteen? Eighteen. We had, where do you get your information, which was question fifteen? That's the social media, in-person meetings, et cetera. And then you had the two rodeo grounds questions. Have you visited the grounds in the last twelve months? And then seventeen, which is the rodeo grounds as a venue. But I, I don't recall what the fifth question is that you liked. Fourteen is, so.
Code question.
Town code question.
Okay, nope, that's all right. Councilmember Neil?
I don't really have, it just seems like everything's still going to be up in the air after this. If somebody sent me all this stuff, I ain't gonna want to sit there and fill it out. It needs to be simplified. I, I, I totally believe this. This, uh, I don't, I don't understand. We haven't write out questions or something. This is going totally a different way than I thought that we were going to see it. This should be questions that go right to the point. All of this is unnecessary, if you ask me. Uh, I wouldn't do it if I'm sitting at home and you send it to me and just let you know.
I appreciate your feedback. It is a lot. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I'd like to compliment our town clerk for all the hard work that she's done on this. It is complicated, but we have a complicated town, so I, I approve what, what's been said here tonight and the form that the town clerk has provided us.
Thank you. And yes, we appreciate all the hard work that you've put into researching and communicating with the company and our council to have, you know, our voices heard on the survey as well.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Can I get one clarifying question? Are, John, Councilmember Anderson, did you say you agreed with the mayor? Or did you say you agreed with the form?
Well, I agree with the form.
You have five questions though?
Yeah, and the five questions.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Which five questions? Because there's more than five.
I think the ones that I listed out.
On the sheet are the ones that the mayor is suggesting.
The ones that are on the sheet.
There's nine on the sheet. We have to narrow it down to five.
There's more than five questions on the sheet. And so the mayor narrowed her five down.
Well, I'll come up thirteen through seventeen and we added eighteen.
Not counting the doubles? Because there's two thirteens, there's.
Yeah, I'm counting, I'm counting the doubles, it's one.
So when we, we were allowed to have eighteen questions and when the company did put them together, there's two number thirteens, there's two number fourteens, and there's a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and we've added an eighteen. So at this time, we have nine questions.
So we need to do.
Questions, apologize, eight questions.
So what we need to do, Councilmember Anderson, is narrow them down just a little bit. So Ms. Garcia went through the survey and there were some that were redundant into one another. So we removed those ones out and no, we didn't actually remove them. I made the suggestion.
Okay, I'll go along with you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, well, I guess for me, my first question is going to be, after this survey comes back, do we care? Because we get these surveys and I feel like we don't actually do anything about them. We get them and we're like, oh, the, the citizen said this, and then we don't necessarily always listen to it. So before we, like Councilmember Neil said, we ask a citizen to sit down and fill out this lengthy survey, let's make sure we're all invested in actually doing the work, because I agree with the first number thirteen. How do you feel about the town manager, town staff, and town council? Those are three very important questions that we hear on the street all the time. People are always complaining about council, they're complaining about staff, or they're complaining about the manager. Well, let's see if on paper it translates to what we hear on Facebook or, you know, because there's always a couple of people who make the most noise, but that doesn't necessarily represent what the people who are going to fill this survey out actually say. So I think that would be good because it would give us a better idea of, are they satisfied with council? Then my question is, if they're not satisfied with council, what is council going to do? Are we going to just be like, eh, they don't like this, or are we going to actually do something to fix it? If they say they don't like the town manager, are we going to say, okay, how do we improve that relationship? Or are we going to say, eh, he's our town manager? So for me, to ask these kind of questions, we all have to be invested in fixing whatever answer they come back to us. If they come back to us and they say the rodeo grounds is not their number one, but we have the twenty people that are screaming, we can't let the rodeo grounds go, which side do we pick? Are, are we prepared to make these choices? So I just, that's my frustration with these things is that we're going to ask you, hey, do you like me? It's a popularity contest, do you like me? And then at the end of the day, me, I'm going to be like, I don't really care if you like me or not. Or somebody else is going to be like, but I want you to like me and I want to fix whatever it is you don't like about me. If you don't like my cantankerism, or you don't like my, how outspoken I am, or you don't like that I'm not always sugarcoating something, great, I can work on that if I actually care that you feel that way about me. If I don't care, then why should I ask you the question? So I do care how the town looks at me. I do care if people think I'm doing a good job or not ju- good job. So I'm invested in fixing whatever issues people might have with me. But I want to make sure we're all invested in that same thing, because otherwise we're wasting your time, we're wasting our, our staff's time, we're wasting our residents' time, and we're wasting this company's time and every money and all that. So that's my first thing, is we all have to be invested in it. But I like number thir- the first number thirteen. The second number thirteen, I feel is repetitive of question number eight, because it's asking, I feel like it's asking you the same question, have you had contact with these people? But I like, um, I like the first number fourteen, so I like thirteen A, fourteen A, and then I like the, uh, projects ranked in order. So that was what, question eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's three, right? I'm like, make sure I count. Uh, how you get your information? And then I like, um, the question about the rodeo ground specific. So those, those would be my five questions.
So I just want to go back for a second. Because for me, and we've done many surveys every year, and for me, when they go out, we do look at them and we do base a lot of our actions and our projects based off of them. When I'm looking at, you know, number thirteen, as Ms. Garcia had mentioned, you know, where it says like manager, staff, council, and then going back up in here with Florence government, our government is a council manager form of government. We work synergistically together. Our staff provides us the information, our manager and our council lead that. Council sets the direction, manager executes that. If we want to drill down on that, I absolutely support that. But in a follow-up survey question, as Ms. Garcia said, at another time, because looking at only having five questions, I also want to know, you know, have, have they visited the rodeo grounds in the last twelve months? Um, that, I really feel that those two tie. I wish that the survey company could almost make them one question, but they're really two parts. And a lot of times we see things where, yes, it's communicated, hey, I want this, but how often are you accessing it?
I, see, and for me, the rodeo grounds, just because somebody doesn't go there, doesn't mean that they don't recognize the value of having that. So it may be something that I may not go to rodeos for whatever reason, but that doesn't mean that I don't recognize that that is a valued part of our community. So if I were to weigh one question over the other, I want to know, is that an important aspect of our community versus if that person goes there or not? Because if they think it's important, at some point, they may actually go there. But if we're asking them, do they, like, what is that? Tell me. Do you go to the rodeo grounds? Yes or no? No? Okay, but that doesn't really tell me anything. It doesn't tell me if you think it's of value to our community.
I can see that.
So how about I do this? So I heard everybody say thirteen B is gone, so we'll eliminate thirteen B.
But wait, thirteen B, I didn't hear everybody say that. I heard Michelle throw it out. If you're throwing thirteen on there, then I think thirteen B should be on there because I've had conversations with Ms. Garcia in the past before. And something that's unique and really needed in the sense that if you're going to add thirteen of, you know, ranking, have you had communication? Because if you haven't had communication in the form of like phone, email, or other contact, don't those two, you and I, can you help me with this conversation that, because this was you talking?
What, what I said was that there's some cats, questions that automatically cancel out other questions. So when you're looking at a survey, you'll go back in and you'll see, like, how did they rate one of the departments, or how did they rate the council? Or, but then you go back in and you can look at the question where it says, have you been engaged? Did you go to a community meeting? Have you listened to a community meeting online? Have you engaged with a council member? So if the question is no on all of those questions, then it's really hard to be able to go back and say, if fifty to sixty percent of our citizens said, no, they've never been to that, but if you have a real strong rating that says they're not a, a, a non-approval rating, you can go back and directly correlate what they're approving. A lot of times, it can be that somebody reads a newspaper and they get the sensationalism out of the paper. But if they haven't been to a meeting, if they haven't had to solicit the assistance of a council member, or if they have not actually met with a staff member, it's really hard to get that rating across. The interesting thing that I do want to say is a national survey is going to be a survey like we've never seen before. It's going to be a survey that's, that ranks us. So it's similar to the state when they say, the state of Arizona, last time I looked, the state of Arizona ranked forty-seventh in education across the United States. It's an actual number out there that says, you know, we need to do better. When we get this number in, it's going to be a real benchmarking tool. And then if we do this same survey every two years, we're going to be able to rank ourselves in comparison and to be able to say, what can we do to improve? And once. And once council gets the rankings, when we're going back in and doing our strategic plan, we can tie it into areas of improvement that we want to see. And these aren't just big picture area of improvements. These break all the way down to the department heads and the way that they function and how we do our jobs and how we reach out to our citizens. But I will also, um, agree with Vice Mayor Cordis that it's very difficult to ask a question to the citizens that you don't want the answer to. So if you're going to proceed down a path and the, it doesn't matter what the answer is on this citizen survey, it's very difficult to have your citizens come in and have a large number of citizens say something is important to them or not important to them. But then we are going to go down the path. The bottom line is, you are the elected officials of the town of Florence. They have empowered you to make decisions. So it's up to you whether you want to do those projects. So I think it's, it's, um, in good faith that we look at whether we do want the questions answered and what we're going to do with those. So thank you, Vice Mayor Cordis, for bringing that up. Thank you, Mayor, for asking the question.
What, um, number thirteen B, wasn't that asked somewhere in the general questions? I feel like they're back, like, that's why I didn't say thirteen B, because I felt like somewhere, but I can't seem to locate it. That it was like kind of asked.
There is questions, when you look on the page that has a, how do you rank? It says, please indicate whether or not you have done each of the following in the last twelve months. It's question eight.
Okay, thank.
And it goes through and it lists specific areas and asks whether they've done them in the last twelve months.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. All right, so.
So it is.
Yeah.
Eight and thirteen B are the same question, basically, because it's asking you if you had contact. Okay.
I agree with that.
And so if we take out thirteen B, we can also take out fourteen because that's a follow-up question on that.
Fourteen is live in.
Fourteen A.
Hang on, I got to scroll down. I'm up at another page. Fourteen A.
That's if you have had contact, what was your impression? So we, if we don't ask that question, we don't have to ask the impression question.
Okay, so does that leave us with thirteen A? Which is the, please indicate how satisfied, if at all, you are with the overall performance of the following members of town government, manager, staff, council. Fourteen, live in Florence, the code.
I didn't hear any of us ask, no, none of us asked for that one. I didn't hear anybody ask for that one.
When, um, when I go back in and talk to him about removal of the snow services and see right there where it says, visited the rodeo grounds in the last twelve months, if I can replace that over on eight, then we're at five questions.
Okay, would you repeat what the five questions are, just so all of our? And actually, I'm going to pause you for a moment because prior to Vice Mayor speaking, Councilmember Mendoza had wanted to speak, and I made a mental note.
Oh, I was just going to comment on thirteen B that, I mean, the information that we can obtain from that, we can actually obtain from the police department, customer service, all those areas, we can get that information from them. So we don't need that question answered.
Yes, we don't want redundancy, like Mr. Councilmember Neil said. This is really incredibly long and I want to thank our citizens in advance for their participation in completing whatever survey comes out.
I anticipate that we'll get tons of calls with people wanting to fill the survey out, so.
I hope so.
It'll be fun.
We always do.
So the questions that would then be chosen is number thirteen. Please indicate how satisfied, if at all, you are with the overall performance of the following members of the town and government. It's town manager, town staff, town council. Number fourteen, A. Please indicate how much, if at all, you would support the town code that requires town manager, department managers to live in the planning area. Current employees exempt. Number fifteen. How, how much of a source, if at all, are each of the following for you to obtain information about town government, its activities, events, and services? Number seventeen. Florence's rodeo grounds venues, which host two events per year, is in need of renovation. So that entire question. And then eighteen, rank the following amenities in order of importance, and there's six that would be ranked.
Yep, I believe that's what I heard as well.
Now with question number seventeen.
The only, the only question I have, and I think you and I are on the same page.
Okay.
With number seventeen, should we have seven? Because this would be interesting, and I love surveys and the way that they work. If you go into the detailed of the rodeo ground and then go into ranking the projects in order, or would you want to rank the projects in order and then go into the rodeo grounds? How should they be ordered? What would make better sense?
Let's put number eighteen to number seventeen.
Okay.
And then we'll go into the rodeo grounds. Browns, my question was on number seventeen. There was the extra that was monies on non-rodeo improvements. Do you want that on your rodeo ground question?
Can you?
I don't understand that question.
So there's, um, there's three areas right now, and there was a request for a fourth area to be asked. So basically, the first question is moving the rodeo grounds. The section, second question is repairing the rodeo grounds. The third question is introducing more events at the rodeo grounds. And then the question was asked to basically spend the money on other things besides the rodeo grounds. I'm asking if you.
Like at the rodeo grounds?
No, it says specifically parks improvements such as Heritage Park, a new recreation center, or post imbute preserve.
I'd almost think that that would be redundant of the ranking the projects.
Okay, then we will take that one off and then I understand.
It's confusing too, because all of a sudden you go from talking about your options for the rodeo grounds to then all of a sudden switching to like.
Yeah.
Something else, and that's why I got confused, because I was like, wait, what?
I agree. So with those decisions on the citizen survey, we will report back in February. And as the timeframe moves forward, I will send you out the sample before it goes so that you can cross compare it, make sure that you agree that it's specifically what the council has requested. And then we'll give you a complete breakdown on when it's going out and we'll keep you informed of as we progress. You also notice the last tab in your packet also has an example of what the survey is going to look like when it comes back to us. The employee survey basically has the same timeline, but we don't need to ask any questions. They do not change questions on employee survey. And again, they will rank us completely on a national level. So we'll know how our employees feel across the state and across the nation. Now, the next survey that is included in your packet.
Will every employee have access to the survey? Are you doing?
Every employee will have a code that will be sent to them, and we are not intimidating them at their work. We're sending them both a postcard and a letter to request them to fill it out. They can fill it on a smartphone, they can fill it out at a computer, they can fill it out at their work if they choose to. But it's completely independent and it's completely private to the employee. Um, we will never know what employee submitted because we will never be the person collecting that data. So our employees should feel secure in providing whatever information they want to provide. And that's what we want. We want factual information that we can go back, put a baseline, and keep improving every year from that information.
Okay, thank you.
So now here we are to the fun part. I know I said everything was fun, but you know, this one is, gets so much fun. This is the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Survey that is actually considered a poll. This would be on QRL codes that are at the rodeo grounds. It says, tell us about our grounds, how are we doing? This would be posted on Facebook. This would be posted on Twitter. This would be an article in the newspaper saying, tell us what you think about our area. And this one is going to be electronically filled out, can be done by a smartphone, and can be done on a computer, can be done on a tablet. And, and we can go in and we can make this a ten questions, five questions, however many questions the council wants. And, um, when we asked council, we asked staff, what, what kind of information do you want? There was a lot of open-ended questions. So we worked with the company to find a way to be able to have, people be able to write in whatever they want. So we'll take the survey, we'll be able to data dump it into an Excel spreadsheet. And then you'll basically see concepts. So what I'll provide council is, the survey is whole, so you can read every single thing put in. And then we will go in and we'll merge it to make sure that we're putting light concepts together. Anytime that a human being, it starts combining thoughts that aren't their own, there's always room for error. But this is not like the employee survey and not like the citizen survey, which guarantees at least a ninety-five percent effectiveness of how our residents really feel. This is a poll. And so this is just how the people that use the grounds feel and anybody who wants to participate. It's not inside the town limits, it's anyone who would like. Someone from Massachusetts can see it online and fill it out. Someone from Oregon could see it online and fill it out. There's no way for us to control the boundaries of who fills it out. So let's go over those questions. First question is, do you have any children seventeen or under who live in your household? That's a standard question that was in the survey, so we can't change that if we want to use it, but we could write our own. In which category is your age? List categories of age, that was another one that we just handpicked from the survey. And then it gets into all personalized questions that were written either by staff or council. How often do you visit the Charles, Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds? It says annually for Junior Parata. This is my first Junior Parata. I attend all events at the rodeo grounds. I have never visited the rodeo grounds. I do not know where the rodeo grounds is located. Um, but next question is, what is the primary reason you use the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds? Spectator, children as an event, part of the event, vendor, other? Next question, if you seldom use or do not use the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Ground, what is the reason? Please check your top two choices. Lack of facilities, poorly maintained, too far from any, or too far away, not conveniently located, not enough events, do not feel safe, do not enjoy rodeo events, events are held at the rodeo grounds, do not interest me. Next question, how would you rate the general upkeep and maintenance of the rodeo grounds? Good, fair, poor? Obviously, I did not put excellent on there because of the state of our current rodeo grounds. Um, what are the specific areas you would like to see improved at the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds? It's an open-ended question. They can write in whatever they like. What are, what are your ideas for expanding offered, offerings at the rodeo grounds? Again, open-ended question. They can write in whatever they like. What role should the town of Florence assume in organizing rodeo events? Select up to two. It says, operate the events and develop and maintain grounds, develop and maintain grounds, maintain grounds, allow a third party to operate, maintain grounds, market activities and events. And then suppose the town of Florence had two million dollars to spend on remodeling the current rodeo grounds, building a new rodeo facility closer to town, or developing a different type of park? What kind of park or improvement would you like to see? It's an open-ended question. What type of recreation programs would you like to see offered by the town of Florence? Non-rodeo grounded question, just a question about events they'd like to come in and participate in. So those are the questions that are available. Apologize, it took me so long to read them. I'm getting older and it's very small print.
No, appreciate all the hard work you put in. I think that it's great that people visiting will be able to give their feedback as well in this poll. Counsel, any questions, comments?
Did, um, have you asked the, um, Mr. Foster to put any input in, on these questions?
I would be happy to contact him and do so, um.
We did, we did meet with him today and let him know that the survey was available online for him to look it over. And if he had any additional comments or feedback for us, that he could either attend the meeting or reach out to us.
And the timeline on this rodeo ground would be that this we're a little bit more flexible on because this is something that we put up, we make live. This is something that council can tell me how long you want to receive the input for. If we did all, we could do all of the month of November, or we could just do the two weeks, the week before the rodeo and the week after the rodeo. So how long the survey is open, that people are allowed to submit the survey, which is really a poll because it is not scientifically correct and accurate. We would have more time, and if you wanted me to seek others' input, I could do that as well. It's entirely up to council how you'd like to proceed.
If there is any input that comes back from that conversation, share it with council. And if, you know, all of council agrees, then we can pop it on there.
Okay, do you like, um, the survey being open for a month? The month of November?
Sure.
I do.
All right, perfect. Well, if you make a motion, I have my marching orders. I appreciate all the great conversation and input into this item. Um, I think it's going to be a good survey for the town of Florence. And remember, it's that baseline, we're, we're going to start to know where we are benchmarking ourselves.
I make a motion that we authorize staff to proceed with conducting the citizen survey, employee survey, and, and rodeo survey with the five questions that council chose this evening.
Motion on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. This is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody in person or online that would like to speak? Ms. Kathy Adam. And then. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Um, this is in regards to the discussion we just had. I try to follow this pretty closely and I, I am not happy. When I fill out that survey, it's not, uh, clear to me that perhaps by picking my priorities, one of my parks could be leaving us or the rodeo grounds could be leaving us. And I think it's very important to the Vice Mayor's point, when you put this survey, survey out to make all of us understand that this may be a funding issue, and you're not just picking your favorite park. Of that list, one of those may not get funded. And I think that's the point, that really, if it's not made clear, we just go by, oh, I happen to go to the park, or as the Vice Mayor said, I don't go to the parata because I almost fell out of a bleachers the last time. So that doesn't mean I don't think it's important. So I want to understand what you're trying to do in the whole town budget of millions of dollars. The only thing that's being pointed out on this survey are our parks. And are you telling me that there is no money in the budget to support all these parks and post imbute? Huge project. We, we're, we love it. And I would hate to see it kind of get low on the totem pole because no one really understands it yet. Right? That does not mean it's not, I think, really important to the whole town of Florence. So I would just ask that you take a minute, be clear about what you want to get out of this, and then make it clear to those of us taking the survey, what the downside could be.
So I just want to take a moment and respond to you. It's not that it's replacing any project or there's a project going away. So there's always a process that has been in place, as we talked about before, when these plans come before us. So when we have, you know, the master parks plan at Heritage Park, when we talk about, you know, the Little League Park and the different funding that's coming in in the form, I believe it was a Diamondbacks grant that we are going to be receiving, as well as the post imbute preserve. I feel that what we're trying to say is the timeline in which, like, where are the priorities? It's not saying, hey, this is not going to happen. It's where do we need to focus? And then all in that simultaneously, just to give a, a different perspective, sometimes there's things that pop up within projects where even though we're going full speed ahead over here, we might hit a little bit of, you know, an issue that we have to work out that's going to take time. So while we're taking the time to work out that issue, we can accelerate a project over here.
I think that makes perfect sense.
Okay, I just wanted to assure you that it's not going.
Understand that, what they're doing. And I think, again, to get the most accurate picture, you want to inform the public on how you might use this information, especially on these five questions, right? The rest is kind of generic survey material. Um, but these seem to be very pointed, and I think a little background for the public to understand how the results might be used would really get you a better. to understand how the results might be used would really get you a better result. My two cents. Thank you.
Appreciate that. How are you today? I apologize. I don't know your name.
Jasmine Lopez.
How are you today?
Doing all right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Um, I did want to, uh, ask about, on that survey, you're saying within the year, how many, how many times have you visited the Whitlow, you know, arena? Well, it's kind of been shut down for a year.
We took that question out, but yes.
I'm just wanted to bring that up. Like, I'm glad it's out, but we, it wouldn't have been a fair question. Um, to follow up with, um, Ms. Michelle, I'm just, do we care? I mean, I'm, if we're going to put the survey out, do you guys really care and do I really care? I mean, is something going to really be done once the survey's filled out? Or again, are you, am I wasting my time? Are you wasting your time? Are we wasting her time? Just, I mean, can we have more events at the events at the arena? Why not? I don't know. Just saying, just throwing ideas out there. But again, I guess it did, it does come down to do we care? Cause I know I do. I absolutely do. One hundred percent.
Well, and I can tell you, we do care.
Okay.
Mayor, may I respond? Cause I, I hear what Kathy said, what she said. Uh, to me, this was not about funding. We have funded in, in our capital budget to support all these things. Uh, it's a matter of priorities because we have limited staff, we have.
Oh, the funding, I'm not, I mean, I'm worried about it, but that, I think that was more.
Yeah. But, uh, but we have funded money to renovate the rodeo ground this year. And we've, you know, we've, we've funded a lot of other, uh, improvement to our parks and all. So I don't think, and maybe Kathy made a good point. We, we need to better explain that, that this is, this survey is not to decide which projects we're going to do. It's decide what priorities, and we're also trying to find out what the interests of the, uh, citizens are.
Right.
You know, if we find out, you know, the citizens aren't interested in uh, a particular item and there's, you know, ninety-nine percent against it. So we gotta maybe recall that project or something.
There's ninety-nine percent against the rodeo grounds?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm saying if we, if we have a project, because the rodeo ground is the only project that we've called out here tonight. But, uh, Lisa has pointed out that this process, we're going to use it in the future for other, other things that are going on in town.
So this is, uh, this survey can affect funding?
Long-term, yes.
That's your question.
Well, yeah, if we put out a survey saying, okay, what do you, what do you think we should do about Heritage Park, for example? And we start asking questions about Heritage Park, we find out nobody wants Heritage Park. Then we would have to change our priorities. But right now, we have all those projects funded, so it's just a matter of which ones that we want to work on first.
When we say we, it's us, right? As.
Collectively, community.
Yeah, yeah, that's community, yeah. Cause, uh, we, I don't know, we funded what, three hundred thousand dollars in the, more or less in the rodeo grounds this year.
But anytime anything happens, and this is just in response to what you just said, and then anytime any changes happen to plans or any action happens, regardless of what the topic is, whether it's a park or a rodeo grounds or events, everything always happens in a public forum. And community participates, council participates, staff participates, and then that direction is given. Just because something is marked on a survey does not mean, hey, wait, nobody wants this. That's just saying, hey, wait, we need to have conversations. Because as Ms. Adams brought up, maybe there could be a misunderstanding on something. And it wouldn't just be a, a one and done change direction. It would be an entire conversation.
Okay. I just want, I, I'm off cue here because I thought we weren't, unless we were directly.
Responding to the.
I thought we weren't supposed to respond to people. So I'm a little confused, but I'm just going to say, I can see your passion right now and I can feel it. So if you need to get in contact with any of us, so you can further discuss what, what your feelings are or where you're at, please do so.
Yeah, we're all.
All very easy to get in contact with. You can get my number, you can get my email. Please contact me if you need to talk or any of us, because I can feel it in you. I can see it on your face. I just, I just know you have more to say and you're, you're holding it back. But I appreciate you showing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
How are you this evening? It's good to see you.
Okay, so I just had a couple of things that I wanted to kind of say is, um, I think some of that terminology is kind of confusing. Um, that survey is going out to the public and not everybody is on the same cognitive level as other people are. So I think there might need to be like a little clarification. And I think that's where a lot of the confusion and a lot of the, the town is talking right now is because there are certain things that aren't understood, like clearly. So I think those surveys are a little heavy. I actually distribute a lot of surveys, um, for where I work right now. And we did a, like a workforce development survey. And one of the things that came back was we needed to bring it down a couple notches to a level where everybody could understand. Um, and I think another thing is, is with like the fairgrounds and are we talking about the park with the extension? Are we talking about the current park? Are we talking, you know, I think things like that are, are what everybody's kind of confused about right now. Are we talking about the lake that's going to be built on there? Or are we talking about the current heritage park? Are we talking about the Whitlow grounds? Are we going to do it through, like she was saying, maybe start it for December or November? I would say put the survey out in December after they've had the event there and see how many people go. So I think just things like that can kind of get lost in translation a little bit. And I think that's where a little bit of the confusion is coming from.
That's actually really good feedback.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, can we look at our timeline and also consult with?
Would you like to call the item back up for discussion, Mayor?
No.
Okay.
I, we, we've made those questions, however.
The only thing that I would say is that I've been instructed to make it available for the rodeo ground participants. So I would at least, these need to at least start it before the first day of the junior parada.
For the rodeo ground one, but for the other one that would be going out, could we change that timeline so that way possibly more of our citizens would have that opportunity to attend? I, I know that you have the timeline that you presented this evening, but could we tweak that a little bit?
Let me go ahead and look at it again. We are going to be collecting data through January. If you'd like to push that back and get your survey results in March, we could push it back thirty days.
I think that was a great idea. And I know that typically it's offbeat. We usually only respond to criticism, but a suggestion came up, so our attorney didn't stop me. He is now. All right. Thank you. Yes.
I think that'll work.
All right. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak? Okay, I see no hands.
Great.
I see one more hand in the back. I love this participation. I just want to put that out there. I'm really thankful that you guys attended and that you guys are speaking.
First of all, my name is Connie Salazar. I have been a Florence native all my life. Some people know me, some don't, but you have great ideas, Lisa. But, you know, moving the rodeo grounds would be a terrible idea, but as a child, I looked forward to after the parade and all the events in town for my parents to, that drive. It seemed like a long drive, but it was an exciting drive to get out there, to the activities. But with Florence's growing and moving south, it's going to eventually be in town. And knowing that if the rodeo grounds grows with a, an adult arena in the back, it's not worth moving. And along with the heritage park, one thing I've asked over the years, a batting cage. I, I mean, that's something that we've got Little League and Pop Warner. We had it when my son was little and then somebody had to have it torn out for his doctor's office. And, oh, we'll get another one. Nobody plays it, but if it's at the park to be utilized as you check it out like the library book. So you go and check, go into the library to get a part fun, to open, to get it active. Or I don't know how it would function out there, but it could be set up by that one little office, move the dumpsters, but I mean, I've just wondered why we, we've sit, put that aside. It would help the kids a lot.
I agree.
But the one thing that really about the, the rodeo grounds, I've gone every year almost, except when I don't have somebody to go with. And it's a joy to get out there. They, they have held dances out there or bands out there. But yeah, it would be to, more activities.
And they're bringing the dance back this year.
That would be great.
Be a great time.
All right.
Thank you, Connie. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right, seeing no motion, we'll close the second call to the public. And then we'll go to the first call to the council. Council member Mendoza.
Um, I was going to talk about an event that happened to me this week. And it kind of ties into what's going on in the town. I walked into Circle K and I had an Anthem t-shirt on. And someone looked at me and they pointed at my shirt and said, no. And I go, what's wrong? And he goes, you're not part of Florence. And I think that's our biggest problem is that, um, you know what? I live in Anthem area, but I am in Florence. I love everything about this town. I ran for this position so that we can make this better. Um, I ran for this position because I wanted to be a voice for people like you guys that are asking these things. Um, I see your passion. I'm just as passionate because I want to see these changes. I came here with, I have seventeen children and I can't afford to give them all a car to drive away from here to have jobs. We need to bring jobs into town. Um, but I think the biggest thing is that I think we're fighting ourselves because I wasn't born in Florence. I was born in Arizona. I'm from Tucson. I've driven up to Florence. I worked at the prison. I played softball at Heritage Park with, with, with my fellow, um, corrections officers and had a wonderful time here. I used to listen to the sirens go off to let the kids know that it's time to go home. I think we need to bring that back. Um,
I agree.
I'm sure you too, Chief. But, um, no, I think, I, I think that if we can work on being Florence, you know, um, we all come from a lot of different places. And I guarantee that the people that live in Florence um, gardens and the people that live in Anthem and the people that live here, they all love this town. Um, I think that if we can all come together, I think that's where our biggest problem is. There's a lot of division. And I know that if there's unity in this town, that we could be better than all the other towns in this state. Florence is, Florence is beautiful. I want to see things like, I mean, I want to see gunfights in the street like Tombstone has. We have that heritage here. I want to see, um, wagons going up and down the street and kids riding on there and doing different things like that. I, I want to see those things come back. I, we're, we're an old Western town. Let's, let's go back to that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Hughes?
Well said.
Not everything else. Okay. Council member Neil?
I just, uh, want to say about the cleanup we did last weekend. It wasn't the weekend before. Weekend before, we got a lot of volunteers, did a lot of work over there and it was, it was a good time. Uh, just want to thank the chief again, Mr. Billingsley. Also, rest in peace, Mr. Colin Powell. Other than that, I have nothing.
Council member Anderson?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of things. One, uh, a report on the chamber meeting this, this last week. It was brought about the state of the town. The chamber would like to be a part of that. And that's, there seems to be some confusion about that. And so I'd like to maybe invite the mayor to a chamber meeting so we can iron out how they can be a part of that because I think there's, there's a big misunderstanding about the state of the town. Cause I've, some of them think they should sponsor that. And that's, well, I would bring it up here tonight and, uh, uh, ask you to come and negotiate, I'll say. All right. Then the other thing that was brought up was the, the event, uh, grant, the assistant grant. Uh, we put out a twenty-nine page document. The county has a three-page document. So I've asked the town to look at that, but I haven't got a reply back. So I'd like to get a reply back from the town on that. And, uh, I want to, uh, compliment the town for their cooperation on the Quinn Building. And of course, uh, the contractor, the owner, uh, that's the way we should be doing buildings downtown. And the other thing, uh, just give you a quick report. I attended the, the Friday night. What's it called? The third Friday night? The third Friday? And, uh, it wasn't a big crowd ever, cause the competition was pretty fierce last Friday, as we all know, between the football game and the, uh, event out on the highway. But, uh, it was, it was nice. I went into about, I'd say fifteen or sixteen shops. The owners there were extremely, uh, happy and glad to see, you know, people could come in. And I wanted to encourage everybody to, uh, attend the next Friday at night we have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, I just, shoot, I don't even know. I'm lost already. I attended, uh, Road to Country Thunder. That was a great event. I always think that's a great event. And I love to see our main street packed like that. And I hope to see main street packed like that more. Um, and I'm excited for junior parada because a lot of the events that it looks like they're going to have is going to help pack our main street like that. So I'm really excited to see this year's junior parada. And I think it's a great partnership. Um, I have to thank, uh, council member Mendoza for his, what he said, because I agree with you a hundred percent. There, there is a, a division and I come from a small town. And then when I, you know, moved into the city, where I moved to was still considered a small area. And the same thing happened. You know, you had the original part and then you had all this new growth and there was this divide all of a sudden. And, and people forget that when I moved here, I didn't move here because Anthem won my heart. I moved here because Florence won my heart because when I walked into this town, I was like, oh my God, it's like this vortex. It just sucks you in and you really can't explain to people why you live here. But it's just the feeling you get. And, and although we may fight like brothers and sisters, when we are out in other parts of Arizona, we do nothing but tell everybody why they should come to Florence and why they should be here. And so I just, I'm sad that that was said to you because. And so I just, I'm sad that that was said to you because I don't care what shirt you have on, as long as it represents Florence, wear it and wear it proud. So keep wearing that Anthem shirt.
All right, thank you. I just have a few things tonight, just to be brief. So Councilmember Anderson, absolutely yes. I will love to accompany you with a chamber meeting for the state of the town this year. The direction that we're going to be going in is a virtual state of the town. And the reason why, in looking at our calendar, from October, November, December, January, we have done such a fantastic job as a community in working, collaborating with others, planning events. And we really have something every weekend that we're going to be doing. And I didn't want to take away from that. We also have our, where we highlight our businesses, our boards and commissions and our community. I'd like to get a calendar for all of our council, so that way we can celebrate our boards and commissions, our staff members, and have that dinner planned like we have traditionally done in the past. I'd like to have an opportunity for us to all bring that back. I have heard some feedback from some business owners in the town of Florence where they want, you know, all businesses in the town of Florence highlighted. We do a fantastic job of highlighting our main street businesses, but really we also want to make sure that we're highlighting all businesses. I know that our chamber director is doing a great job with that. Our council has partnered on a matching grant with them as well as Local First Arizona. If we could get with the chamber to see if they have an update for us in regards to that information that will be rolling out and how we can support all business owners and that tourism in the town of Florence, I'd like to, you know, talk with our council so that way that's on our agenda and we can have that presentation all together. The cleanup was great. I did not make it out there because as I was driving down there, I saw Councilmember Neil. He was stopping for some breakfast at the river bottom with his lovely wife. And I said, hey, wait. Oh, breakfast. I said, hey, wait, I'm on my way down to help you. What are you doing? And it was kind of bonus for me. It's like mom at Thanksgiving dinner where you're like, hey, do you need help with the dishes? Nope, you're done? Cool. Cleanup was done. But we did have an opportunity to go down to celebrate McFarland's birthday, see the amazing farmer's market that is growing bigger and bigger every single week. If you haven't made it out there, you know, please do so. And then last but not least, yes, that event assistance grant, I had sent an email. I know that in the following week, Councilmember Anderson communicated it. I know that our staff has gone forward and has met with not only the chamber director, but also all parties, I understand, have been invited to give their feedback. So I believe there'll be some changes that will be coming before our council. I haven't seen them yet, but good news. And that is all for my notes this evening. I want to say thank you for public participation because so often we always say, come to the meetings, come talk. And thank you for doing that. And our information is all online. We're here. Let us know because it makes it exciting because this way here, we're all working as a team. We're all one Florence. All right, we do have an executive session. If we can have a motion. I don't like executive sessions in case you couldn't tell from my voice.
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session with Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. Do I need to read that?
Second. Motion and a second? No, no, we need to back it up. So you have to go back to 12. Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. We have to adjourn to that.
Okay.
So we're not adjourning from this meeting yet. We're adjourning to our boards.
I make a motion. We adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, correcting my last motion.
Can we call the meeting to order first for Community Facility District?
That's what I'm doing. We're right here.
Okay. She just adjourned to without calling it to order, though.
So.
Number 11.
Roll call. Chair Walter here. Vice Chair Cortez.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
Here.
Board Member Rodriguez. Board Member Hughes.
Here.
Board Member Neil. Board Member Mendoza.
Here.
All right, item C, discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, September 7th, 2021, special meeting minutes. Is there any member of council that has any questions or comments regarding that agenda item? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, September 7th, 2021, special meeting minutes.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item 13, need a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session with Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and the mayor and council of the town of Florence.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session with Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and the mayor and council of town of Florence.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to executive session.